Here.
Councilmembers Bagley?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levison?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Santos?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we'll need to gather the public invited to be heard list.
Hi, Mayor Coombs and Council. My name is Joan Peck, 1935 Scroose Avenue, and I'm here to address study session item number A. The proposed revisions to Chapter 1502 of the Land Development Code. I read it through and on first perusal, it kind of appears that you're trying to reduce the citizens' ability to interact with their government, just concerning the vision of our city. And I'm wondering if that's true, why are you going to do that? Why would you want to reduce the interaction with the public on major developments within our city? Shouldn't we be working toward more engagement, more civil discourse, not less? And if this is true, who are you truly representing? The people and their interests in the city or just the developers? Thank you very much. I would like you to table this, if you wouldn't mind, so that we can actually understand a little more what's going to be happening. Because if you do vote on this and pass it, it really affects every citizen in the city. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at public invited to be heard? I guess being the one, I'll close, public invited to be heard.
Mayor, there are no special reports and presentations. The first item, only item on your agenda is 4A, Proposed Revisions to Chapter 1502 of the Land Development Code. And Mr. Don Burchett, Principal Planner, is here to present.
I get to sit at the table today, so. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Don Burchett with the Planning Development Services Department. I am here tonight along with Dan Kramer, Assistant City Attorney, who is going to be coming in here any second. He was grabbing a power cord for his computer. And we're here tonight to talk to you a little bit about some of the changes that were made to the ordinance that you had originally looked at back in September at a study session where we had some specific questions that we had for you. And we got some direction from the City Council on. And then also some revisions that as we were going through putting this into ordinance that we felt needed to be done from a, one from a readability standpoint, trying to make this something, a document that everyone would be able to read and have a better understanding of. And then also Dan will cover some other items that he thinks important for the council to be aware of, reflected in the changes that are proposed in the changes to 1502. Some of the things that I'd like again to just point out is that at the September 23 meeting, City Council did give us some specific direction. Again, I'll go over what those were changes in the draft that was included in your packet. And then the one thing that I really want to really stress tonight is that one of our overriding goals that we've had with all of our Land Development Code changes is that we're trying to make this document more user-friendly, not just for staff or a developer, but also for the citizens themselves to be able to pick this document up and read it without having to read through a bunch of legalese or jump around section to section and to have a better understanding of what the process is for development. And also where they can be involved and how they can be involved. And so I do want to make sure that everybody understands that that was one of our goals. It was not to try to cut anybody out or to keep them from participating. That wasn't our goal. Some of the things that we're going to be talking about tonight. One of the things that I think is important is that we have changed the amount of citizen involvement that is allowed underneath the changes that we have made and have proposed to Chapter 1502. Some of them, for example, are we are now going to require signs to go upon properties when someone is going to have a neighborhood meeting on a project, whereas in the past, that wasn't a requirement. So we're going to give people the opportunity to know an application is looking to be submitted on a property before they even do the neighborhood meeting by posting a sign as well as doing the notice to those property owners around the property. So that way, if someone is driving down the road and they may have an interest in a property, they could still contact the city, ask what's going on, and they could come to that neighborhood meeting if they'd like to. So I think that's an added step that I think is a good step in trying to increase public participation. We're also based on the council direction, and that was one thing that council directed us to make as a change from the last meeting. Another change that council discussed and asked us to do, which we had proposed, was to increase the ability for us to notify renters that are not property owners within the notification area. Because we had an appeal that had come up to council recently where people complained that they never received notice. Well, they were renters. They weren't owners of property. Our code currently says if you're an owner of property, you are notified by writing. But it doesn't allow for us to send notice to an occupant of a property, someone who may be living in an apartment building and feel that they have, are being impacted by development or that they have a concern, or maybe they're in favor of it. They're in favor of a gas station because they're tired of driving three miles to get gas or maybe to get something quick for groceries, and maybe that person would like to speak in the positive of a development application. So that's a change that we think is, again, a change that increases the ability for people to participate. One of the changes that has been proposed and was voted on by council at our study session was the ability of an appellant and who could appeal. So we did remove the ability that, right now, I would say, and Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's fair to say right now that our current code allows anybody, whether they are within a notice area, whether they live in the city of Longmont or they live anywhere else, they could appeal a project and appeal a decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission up to City Council. Now, there are some wording in there that says that they're supposed to say why there was an error made. But in general, just about anybody could appeal a decision the way it currently is written in our code that is currently in place. What the discussion that we talked about was that the concern, as I understood it from council, is that if you haven't been a party to this process the whole way through, if you haven't participated, and then at the very end, there was not a vote that you felt was to your liking, then that person, as I understood it, then shouldn't necessarily just have a right then to appeal it to City Council. But if they've been an active participant, if they've been notified, that they should have that ability to appeal that decision. So someone who has followed the process. And so I believe that's a fair way to say that what our proposed changes are based on that direction from council is that as long as someone is a property owner, was in the notice area, is the city manager, the Development Services Director, or anyone who has formally made a request to us to be notified of any meeting that takes place on a project, that they would have the right to appeal that project because they have shown interest in the project through the process to make the appeal. And so that's the change that you need to be an active participant or you need to meet one of those other standards to have standing to appeal. Okay? The next change that we looked at was that we did propose to try to make the notice areas that we do mailings out more standard. Right now, if you look in our code, it starts out and it says for certain development applications, we do a notice of 750 feet. But if you meet certain specific criteria, we can expand it out to 1,000 feet. And then the Development Service Manager has the ability to say, we think it should go further. So the Development Services Manager or the Planning Director today can make the decision, under our current code, that the area could be expanded based on the impact to the area. What we've asked is that instead of having the potential for a mistake to be made, that we go and stay with that 750, but we still keep the ability for the Planning Director to look at it and make a decision that this is a development that has impacts to a larger area, and therefore I'm requiring them to do a notice area that's larger than 750 because of the ramifications of that development. But let's make it based on the true development, not just because of it went from 199 homes to 200 homes or from 200 multifamily units to 201 multifamily units. And that's the way it's currently written. It's based truly on a number. Once you reach a certain number, then the area gets expanded. We've expanded notice areas in the past. I expect us to do that again in the future based on the true impact of a development, not just because they've reached a certain number of units or a size of a building. And so that's where we had talked to you about that, and it seemed that council was okay with us heading in that direction. The other thing that is included in this new draft is we have put in language that actually spells out the appeal process that we've asked you to follow here over the last year, year and a half. We've been giving you kind of a handout with your packet that says this is how we would recommend you follow a procedure to go through this appeal. Limit everybody to 15 minutes, you know, give everybody an opportunity. Go through it in this manner so that it's clear and concise. Everybody has a good idea of what the flow of the meeting is going to be. You know, that was created because we wanted to give you something to try to help guide your process. Now we're proposing to put that into code so that way it's there. It shows everybody, if you're going to appeal, this is the agreed-upon process. This is the rules that everybody has to follow, and everybody knows that it's clear that way. Because before, we would give them a copy of what we gave you and say, this is our recommendation to plan, or to City Council, but they could choose to change it. There was nothing binding you to have to follow that process. So we, but we felt that was a good way to give everybody a fair shake and everybody equal time. So that's why we went that way. The next thing that's an additional item is that we've now included, for better or for worse for Eugene, we've added in the city attorney's office as the person that's going to review an appeal letter to make sure that it meets the criteria for an appeal to City Council. In other words, there are specific things that they have to show that the Planning Commission did not do or did an error in order to appeal to City Council. It's not just, I don't like it. That was open space behind my house for the last 10 years, and I didn't look at the comp plan to see if it was going to be built on. The realtor told me it was going to be open space. That is not a review criteria. That is not what you are then asked to make a decision on. You're asked to look and see, does this project meet the review criteria? Or did the Planning Commission fail to do something in their job when they reviewed this application? Did they make an outright just mistake? And if so, then we need to correct it. But that's what you're being asked, not just to say, I don't like development behind my house, so stop it. That's not what the rules say. The rules say if you meet our rules, you meet our review criteria, you can go forward with your development. That's that certainty that I think everybody has expressed to us as, if I'm going to come to your city, I want to know that these are the rules I have to follow, and if I meet these, I should be able to go through with the project. So Eugene will now be reviewing any of those appeal letters to make sure that they've met that standard. The other thing to keep in mind is that if Eugene says that they didn't, it says that they get a second chance to rewrite their appeal and resubmit it to him within seven days. So it gives them another opportunity. If they don't make a good argument, Eugene can say, look, you didn't address this. Here's the code section of what your appeal should be on. You didn't address this. I'm turning this down. You have seven days to try to readdress it. It gives them another chance. So that's something right now they don't get. I mean, granted, they can appeal on anything right now. But by trying to focus them on what their appeal should be about, it also gives them two opportunities to make an argument of why council should hear this. So that's the way that it's currently proposed. Other items that hopefully will help everybody again is, again, we updated the review criteria. We have some standard ones that apply to everything, and then we have specific ones for certain applications. Again, review criteria are, does it meet the comprehensive plan for the city of Longmont? Do, can the city provide services to this property? These are general statements that we have to make a finding that they meet. So by cleaning these up, we think this is a better process for everybody to wear, whether I'm a developer, I'm a citizen, or I'm the Planning Commissioner, the City Council. We believe that by rewriting these, these are going to be easier for you to understand and look at and say, okay, I don't think they meet this, or you know what, I think they do. That was one of the improvements.
The question, what if, say, Eugene's gone on vacation, can we give, extend that from seven days to 10 days or 15 days?
Great question. He's always connected. We'll look that up real quick and try and answer that question here for you. And then the last thing that we had talked about at our last meeting changes was this discussion about our mobile home subdivisions and mobile home parks. Again, we've stricken that language out. We're going to add that into the use matrix and treat it just as we would a regular residential subdivision or as any other kind of business, if they're going to do the mobile home park, that it would be a business. So that's kind of a summary of the changes, other than, again, the items that Dan's going to talk about and some of the things that, as reading through it for the 15th time, we've kind of said, that doesn't make sense, and so we want to reword it. And that's a general description of the changes. And now I'm going to let Dan cover his few items that he has to give you some update on.
Mayor and council, I'll try not to overlap with Don. And to answer the mayor's question first, there is no provision in there as it's drafted for vacation for the city attorney. The city attorney does have the ability to delegate, not that he would trust any of us to do that. Just a few highlights from a lawyer's perspective on 1502. First, for the first time, the chapter would distinguish between quasi-judicial and legislative decision-making that hopefully will clean things up for PZ members and council members who aren't sure what, which types of actions are which and what that means. So of course, anyone can always contact the city attorney's office and talk about that, but it hopefully will be nice to have that right into the code as well. There's also a new paragraph on ex parte communications, just as an ever-present reminder to everybody. There's a new category of application. Herself for, there's been major applications, minor development applications. The new one is administrative applications. These are the types of applications that should be ministerial in nature, where the Planning and Development Services Director is just carrying out the will of the council as it's expressed in the code. These are things like temporary use permits, minor modifications, exceptions to street access standards, and changes of use when these kinds of applications really are not a close call. Very simple to judge that this is something that should be allowed, that this would be able to be done over the counter, as planning likes to say, right away. There would not be a prolonged development process for these types of applications. Appeals, Don talked about appeals quite a bit. Want to be clear that this draft does include a narrowed standard for appealing. The permissible grounds for an appeal would be limited to, A, the decision is not supported by any competent evidence in Planning and Zoning Commission's record; B, PZ's decision is plainly inconsistent with the review criteria, so plainly inconsistent, as shown by clear and convincing evidence; or C, the decision-maker, Planning and Zoning, exceeded its authority or jurisdiction as contained in municipal code or charter. So it would not be enough in the future for someone to appeal to council and say, I disagree with what Planning and Zoning Commission did. It's a slightly different thing, which is to say, Planning and Zoning Commission did something that was plainly incorrect, and I can show it to you why that was the case. It's a slightly different relationship between council and PZ contained in this draft than exists today. Don covered the differences in who would have standing for appeal. And the burden of proof on appeal would now be on the appellant rather than on the applicant. As the code exists today, even if the applicant has won at Planning and Zoning Commission and their project is approved, they have the burden on appeal of proving again that they have met all of the review criteria. This would change that. Now, as happens in court, the appellant would have the burden. Let me walk that back. That's a little confusing. That's not always the way it works on appeal in court. We don't need to get into those details. The last significant thing I want to talk to you about is a fix that we came up with for, well, it might not be a complete fix, but it's a fix we came up with for the brewery, Montessori school type of issue that came up a few months ago. for the brewery Montessori school type of issue that came up a few months ago. There is a provision in state code that allows the city to request a hearing in front of the school board whenever a charter school or a school district is going to build a building. We don't have the authority to zone school buildings the way we do to zone other types of buildings. But we haven't been requesting these hearings, in part because the timeline to request these hearings, it has to be requested by PZ or by council within a very short timeframe. We haven't been requesting them. This new section would automatically request these hearings. And it would be to the Planning and Development Services Director to send the letter to the school board or to the charter school saying that these are requested and that we're requesting to review the plans for these schools. That at least creates some procedure for discussion of whether land uses are compatible. The last thing we've done since you've seen this is we've added a whole bunch of cross references that that accounts for 15, 20 pages of this ordinance, just from other parts of the code referencing this section that we need to change, this chapter, that we need to change. With that, we're available for any questions.
So when I was reading through the the appeals section, it actually does not specify what happens or what the remedy is if the appellant disagrees with the final decision, nor does it say after the seven-day response period when that person submits it, what the time period for response from the city attorney is. I didn't see that. I looked at it and I thought, well, maybe I, you know, there are so many variations, and we talked about that when we met today, of where things are, that I was really not. Everybody has different page numbers.
Right.
So I can't. I I guess, can you explain that?
Mayor, council member Levison, I'm not sure I fully got your first point. But as to your second question, the draft does say, "City attorney shall nail notice to the appellant of any deficiency in their notice of appeal no later than seven days from the filing of the notice of appeal." And then after that notice of the deficiency, the appellant shall have seven days from the mailing of the notice of deficiency to cure such deficiency.
And then what and and at what period of time then will the city attorney make the decision? That I didn't find in the paragraph.
A second decision?
Uh huh.
It doesn't it doesn't go through each iteration of when it could happen a second, third, fourth time, I suppose. But based on the wording there, it would be seven-day schedule again.
And then, so I'm just looking at process here. In a, as somebody who's done two appeals from planning and zoning decisions and appeared on the other side of the podium in front of council, it is exceedingly difficult when you have a very long planning and zoning meeting with an ultimate decision to get the record, the the record of that meeting so that you can actually go through and be able to note specific if you're filing an appeal with this amount of specificity required. Then is it too much of a burden to have simply seven days? Calendar days when you're looking at when the appeal must be filed? Because when you have maybe a two-hour hearing at Planning and Zoning, to really be able to even go to Channel 8 and get a tape of that meeting so that you can review everything off of the what was broadcast. And certainly, it would be a difficult requirement for staff to be able to provide a next-day record of of action and discussion, to be able to demonstrate how they erred in a decision. And because that that means you have to go through that thought process of what the discussion was.
Mayor and council, ultimately, that's for the council to decide whether these timeframes are reasonable. I can say that the permissible grounds for appeal are listed, I hope clearly, in this draft. I know in discussing this with Don, the planning department is always willing to discuss how appeals work, what a person needs to do in order to accomplish an appeal. I I do want to walk back what I said to answer your last question, though, thinking through it a little bit more. You don't have infinite opportunities to cure deficiencies for a notice of appeal. You need to cure it correctly the first time. I think that it would be seven days for the city attorney to make that determination.
But you did not answer my question on what's the remedy following the decision of the city attorney? The remedy for the appellant?
The appellant disagrees with the determination of the city attorney, and the appellant's remedy is court.
If I'm not mistaken, Dan, that's always been the case. If if an appellant doesn't like the council's decision, the next step is for them to take it to court. That's always been the case. Mayor, council member Santos, correct? Thank you.
Okay, had I seen further questions from city council members? Council member Christensen?
Okay, currently, then, under what we, this new document, the only people who can appeal are the applicant, the owner of the subject property, the city or the city manager. We've eliminated any other person who is standing to appeal under Colorado law. I don't understand how this doesn't severely limit the rights of citizens of the city. I know technically, they can appeal. They can, if they know that something is about to happen, they can write in and list to be informed about things. And they can also, well, there are there are ways to get themselves listed, but they're not very transparent. They're not very available to the average citizen. I just, I don't understand why we need to make this more difficult for the average citizen to appeal things. Because we really are in a very big community. And something that happens on the other side of town often does does affect me or someone else on the other side of town, whether it's obvious or not. So I'm wondering where this desire to cut down on the number of people who can appeal comes from, because I don't see that there are that many appeals, frankly, anyway. And so I'm just wondering where this is coming from.
Mayor Coons, top member.
A vote of city council.
Council member Christensen, the there's a there's a couple of things I'd like to clarify. So our original draft did not have that removed. Council directed us to remove that from our draft, so we we did that based on the direction we got from council.
I know.
Now, one thing that I want to make clear, though, is that there are two sections on the right to appeal. One is for a minor development application. And that is limited. So that would be, you are doing a final plat on your property to create, say, two parcels from one. That's a staff-level review. That's a minor development application. That appeal is only allowed by the applicant, the owner of the property, or the city manager, are the only ones who can make the appeal on a minor development application. But a major development application, preliminary plat, preliminary development plan, conditional use, the things that we typically see the appeals on, say that the applicant has the right, the owner of the subject property, and then any person or organization entitled under this chapter to written notice of the public hearing on the application. So again, if we give notice to the property owners around, they would have an ability. If we give it to a neighborhood group, they would have it. If we give it to the renters, they would have it. If they, someone driving down the road sees the sign up now that there's a development application under review, and they call us and they submit a request to be notified of any public hearing, now they too are a person who could appeal because they've taken that step. They've taken that interest in in doing it. So the the people that truly get does keep out, then, are those people that maybe find out about it after the fact and then feel that they want to appeal. That to to me, that's probably the best way I can explain it.
I know.
I just wanted to clarify, it's not, we we don't exclude everybody from major development applications, but there is a restriction. That is that is true.
Right. But the the problem is that mostly people find out about it through having heard about something that went on at public, planning and zoning, if they hear about that. And then it's too late because the meeting has already happened. Unless they find out about the neighborhood meetings or the planning and zoning, then they're basically no longer have a right to appeal. And that's that's a problem for major, major issues and major developments in the city. As far as community, involving the community in community development, it kind of eliminates the community part, you know? If you're kind of just collecting it to the people who are the most savvy. And, you know, most, most people, they work and they want to relax when they come home. They don't really pay attention to all the things that are going on in development. And so, but it's not that they don't care. They're just, they have lives and, you know, and then when they hear about it later on, then they get really riled up about it. But it, by this, according to this, then they would be cut out of having any kind of right of appeal. And that's what I, I don't see the reason for that. But we are the ones who initiated that, not, you know, the people who voted for that. Right. And we could change that. We could restore that.
Thank you, Mayor Cooms. You're going to jump in here, wake up a little bit. I I personally think that the whole opt-in provision is too much. It's great to say that we want all people in the community to have a say on all things and all matters, and I think that is true. I think right now, we have a process. We have elected representatives who represent our constituents. We have public invited to be heard. We have several ways of our citizens to communicate, not only with staff, but with their elected representatives here at the dais in order to to have their opinion and their voices heard. However, when you go the extra step and all of a sudden you give random citizens standing, you know, that's a dangerous road. I mean, if Sean and Sandy are married and they're going to get a divorce, and all of a sudden, because of some type of a personal opinion or belief, I feel that I should have the ability to show up and have my say in the courtroom, it's none of my business. And I think that at some point, you know, I mean, I as a stranger and not a party to the marriage, should not have a say. Now, if I was grandma or grandpa and I wanted some time with my grandkids, maybe I should be able to show up and talk to the judge. But I think random citizens being able to engage in a process, especially a quasi-legal process, that they do not have standing is just not the way the system's supposed to work. And I think that in this particular case, I think those who are impacted are people who own the property, people who rent or own the property within that, you know, immediate geographical zone where they are required to have notice. But someone living across town, they might have an opinion, but that does not necessarily give them a legal right, nor should we grant them the legal right to show up and just butt in. Because it's none of, if I'm living across town, I don't think it's any of my business. I can show up a public invited to be heard in the city council and tell everybody what I think without actually becoming a player in the legal system. That's what I think. So I already think we've gone too far.
Council member Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Cooms. I kind of like this middle approach. What we've seen in the past, prior to my time on council and during my time on council, are kind of frivolous appeals. From people, I just don't like that to, you know, it could be anyone from outside the city in reality. Somebody from Erie or Berthitt or Boulder, or you name it, come in and file, basically file an appeal. I do like the 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 notion of more notice. So I think that kind of covers some things for you, council member Christensen. Whereas, as I said, as Don said earlier, normally, it would just, mailings would go out just to property owners. And there was, you know, with the last appeal that we had, we had a renter come and say, "I didn't get notice." It was that meeting that pretty much initiated what we're, I guess, what what they're trying to propose and the and the changes. So with that notification, and then council member Bagley's right, is, you know, we have, this is an appeals process, and then after the appeal, there are still regular steps for whatever happens with anything in planning. There's still first reading of an ordinance to approve X. There says, there's a second reading. So there's public invited to be heard there. There's a public hearing in the next one, the second reading. It's not shutting people out. It's making sure that there is reasonable questions about whether Planning and Zoning did their job correctly. And that I understand because having been the liaison for Planning and Zoning, and three of us have on on council, we've seen where folks have just come up and said, "I just don't like it." And that's it. You know, I I thought that was going to be open space forever. I didn't know that eventually it could be either single-family homes or multifamily apartment complex. This clarify, I like the clarification. So whereas, I see your point of view, council member Christensen, I see your point of view, council member Bagley, I think this strikes the nice middle of the ground that I think most of the council's looking for.
Thank you, Mayor Cooms. So a couple of questions. One of them being, in order for an appeal to be successful, there has to be a defect in the process. Is that my, is that a correct understanding of the?
Mayor and council, council member Moore, I'd say in general, that's correct. I'd say there is room for substantive defects. They just have to be plain. They have to be clear. It can't be, I I want to say it can't be open to endless debate, but then again, everything is. It 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 has to be able to be shown by clear and convincing evidence that what the Planning and Zoning Commission did was plain, clearly inconsistent with the review criteria. That's the substantive piece.
Review criteria being comp plan, zoning, you know, emergency access, those type of things, right?
Those types of things. I'll let Don elaborate.
Council member Moore, I would also say that where I think you're also asking is if there was a material defect in, for example, our notice. If there was found out that for some reason, the notices did not go out on time or we failed to notice, we did something in error. I think that the third criteria, which would be that the decision maker exceeded its authority or jurisdiction as contained. If if someone, if we don't follow the proper process, then I don't see how the planning commission or the city council can make a decision based on the code if if the process was was not followed. So I think you could argue that even a material defect in way we, if we miss something, that that could also be a ground to appeal. So that 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 I think's additional as well.
And so now, I guess, the purpose then for the city attorney to review to be try to identify that there is a basis for an appeal?
Correct.
The timeframe from the time the attorney determines its And that, the timeframe from the time the attorney determines it's not material, but the appellant disagrees, how does that work? Because the project could move forward before it gets to court.
Councilmember Moore, so, the, the process, and there's language in the code here that says that if someone moves forward with any approval that's been appealed, they do so at their own risk, that the city is not responsible for any damages that they incur. So, a developer, yes, could start and try to do development on the property if they have everything in place. But the way that the section is written and the way that what we see is that typically these occur when there is still another process that needs to happen in development. In other words, the, the process that's being appealed is not the action that lets them start breaking ground. It's typically an earlier step that still has another process they need to go through before they can go forward. So, if the attorney's office said in their seven days, so, "I want to appeal a decision. I have seven days today and I, under this code, I would have seven days to make that appeal." I write up my request saying, "This is why I think the planning commission erred." I submit that to the city attorney's office, Eugene now has seven days to review it. We're going to notify the applicant as soon as we get that notice in, that it's being appealed. Now, whether it's a valid appeal, at this point, we don't know. But we're going to warn them and tell them, "Look, you know, you might want to hold off until we find out what happens." Eugene could look at it and say, "Within seven days, this doesn't meet the criteria that are spelled out here. You didn't identify what it is. This is my, my ruling." Okay? So he's going to have to write back to them and tell them, "This is why I did not find it to be valid." That's now helpful to them. Because now I know where I messed up in my appeal letter. Now I can try to get my facts that I maybe had for, didn't include, that I didn't know that I had to, and I can try to bolster that now and then turn it back in for Eugene to review. Now, after that second time, if still they haven't done it, then we get into the court issue that we talked about previously. But in, in this manner, I think it's going to give someone another chance to try to really think through their argument if it gets denied the first time and truly put down what really should be the evidence they're going to present to the council of why the error was made and what that error is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I really appreciate all the work and all, for all these years in working on this and redoing this, and the work also done by Planning and Zoning on rewriting this. I think it reduces red tape, I think it reduces frivolous lawsuits, I think it saves the city and developers confusion over what should happen in the process. And I would move to direct staff to bring forth the ordinance that implements the proposed changes.
All right, let me take a second. On discussion here at this point, you know, I tend to agree, this is kind of a pretty balanced approach. When we first talked about this, you know, way back when, the, you know, concept is if we're going to have like a Mill Village, you know, another big development southeast of town, someone up in the northeast of town could be totally out of the loop and he could come in at the last minute, he or she, and say, "Geez, all of a sudden, I'm against this because on Friday nights I want to go to the Nuggets game and then there's going to be increased traffic on 119 because of this project, so I'm going to appeal this process." So I think, you know, some of the reasons that Brian pointed out, or Councilmember Bagley pointed out, you know, made sense to me, and I think that's why we directed planning and zoning, or the code development to be written this way. It's not perfect, but I don't think there ever is going to be a perfect system. I, I think I tend to agree with Councilmember Santos that this is a pretty balanced approach, that citizens can still come to a planning and zoning meeting from all over the city on something that they're concerned about and get involved early. But if they're not going to get involved early and they have no direct stay, I kind of understand that argument too. So, I tend to agree with Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Santos.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. I'm not going to be voting to send this along in its current form. Couple of reasons. You know, number one, one of the significant process changes is that irregardless of the success of the appeal to counsel, there was always the other avenue, instead of going to court, that there could be a democratic citizen initiative to overturn a council decision. Now, if the city attorney becomes the gatekeeper and it's his sole discretion to pass something along on an appeal, then I think it removes a critical part of what city council has a responsibility as an elected official to be held accountable for our decisions. And I think the city charter, you know, also indicates that, you know, people can use this democratic citizen initiative-led process to, you know, further their desires about decisions made. And I think that we're cutting off an important piece of the democratic process and by having this additional mechanism. The other part of it is, I could see that there could be a very difficult situation where if it's quasi-judicial and the city attorney has made that determination, then council members cannot be collaborating, not collaborating, or corresponding with constituents on the matter. And, you know, we may get notice of the letter of appeal and his decision, but I imagine that would be considered public record, would it not? That it wouldn't be sent under attorney-client privilege as confidential for us to review, you know, his reasonings and what he's given to the appellant as a reason to turn something down as being deficient. And then he would make a statement of fact if there was still continued deficiency after that first, that curing period of seven days. I guess, I think that the philosophical shift here is something that really truly bothers me. And Planning and Zoning are not reachable as far as, except to council as an advisory capacity. So when you look at where the buck stops, I always perceive the buck stops at the council. And I really find this additional review criteria to be onerous and the shift in philosophy that the pro se citizen going essentially in front of a professional attorney, then having to have the burden of proof shift, almost is like the burden of proof that a death row inmate is making at the last hour of appeal to the Supreme Court. And once that's done, you know, the ultimate decision is handed down, or, or, you know, the failure to participate in interceding. So, I don't see that there's a way, when the decisions are made, that council can even be involved with having a conversation with our constituents in this new proposed scenario. And so I will not be voting for it. And I really don't believe that we've seen frivolous appeals. When the appeals that I've done, in fact, on the minor development applications, one appeal that I handled on behalf of my neighborhood, I would not have, under these new rules, they couldn't even come to the neighborhood association leader who might be more expert in reviewing applications to help the, an adjacent property owner. So I really think that we're going backwards here. I don't think that we are, really have had a long history in this town of frivolous appeals. And if it is frivolous, I mean, we've been handling things at council very efficiently. And I'm really not afraid of gumming up our docket with reviewing things that citizens feel there was an error made from planning and zoning. So, I think people, my confidence is that people that come in front of this body or come in front of Planning and Zoning, they don't just do it screaming that, "I don't like the way, you know, something looks." I think everybody realizes that any piece of open ground that is not a publicly owned space or a covenant for development not occurring is going to be developed sometime. And I think that that's just what, what people know. And they learn that when they engage in the process, going to neighborhood meetings or other part of the public process. So, I'm not going to be voting for it.
Councilmember Levison.
I won't be voting for it either in this state, although I really do appreciate the years of work you've put into it. I think the whole thing is a huge improvement and of codifying things, making them consistent. The only things that I disagree with is parts of the appeal process. Because I agree with Councilwoman Levison that this shift of placing more of a burden, a higher bar on proof of, for the appellant, or the person who's appealing things, of proving that Planning and Zoning has done something wrong, I think that creates a problem. I think that we are delegating, that city council is, by passing this, is delegating our responsibility to both Planning and Zoning and the city attorney. And I don't think we should be creating that problem. And I also believe that we are really disempowering a lot of the citizens because Planning and Zoning and the city attorney are not publicly elected officials and they don't have responsibility to the citizens. We do. And that's a very big philosophical shift. So, thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Well, it doesn't shift the responsibility to non-elected officials from elected officials because in the end, if it's appealed, I guess, into this scenario properly, it comes to the city council. And at that point, also, while things are being appealed and we know it's coming, potentially coming to the city council, it's, we become the quasi-judicial board, we can't have contact with anyone about what we may or may not see at the appeal. So that's not correct. And that was asserted that, you know, we wouldn't be able to talk to constituents. That's not true. What is also not true is that if council were to have, if this got appealed to council, council approved whatever it is, again, as I stated earlier, there's a process, there's first and second readings of annexations, you name it, what happens. Citizen initiative for a petition is still there to overturn council. I don't see where that goes away. That is not correct. That was stated earlier. You know, you know, again, all we are doing tonight, as a study session, is telling staff yea or nay on these proposed, proposed changes. If the yays have it, we have a first and a second reading, just like we would under the auspices of what's being proposed here. I don't understand where this notion of cutting residents, citizens out of the process is coming from. It'll be there. Maybe I'm, I'm looking at it from both, you know, looking at, trying to, trying to see where others are seeing it and I'm not. And I've seen several appeals before I got on council, there were several frivolous, or just because I don't like a certain real retailer, or I don't like that a tower is going up, or I don't like this or I don't like that. I've seen it several times. This, while it may be a little bit more of a burden, and I would say a small smidge, because what happens is residents are pretty good and they will find someone to help them write a very good appeal letter. We've seen really fantastic ones. Or they write one themselves and if it gets denied by the city attorney, they have a second opportunity. I don't see where that diminishes anyone's rights.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Woo, what a good night. The, I guess, I guess my question is for Mr. May, or Mr. Kramer, vote either one. So my question is, right now, when somebody goes to the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they make a decision, and then that appeal comes to council, do they need to meet certain criteria as it currently stands, or is it the de novo hearing where they just get a come get another free shot with council?
Aaron Council, Eugene May, city attorney. We have been treating it up to this point as basically a de novo, where the applicant has the burden to demonstrate compliance with the criteria of the code again.
Can you explain what de novo is?
That means hearing as if the first hearing never happened, meaning that you get to come back and just make your case before council as if you never were at Planning and Zoning.
Attorney.
Sorry, yes. The, so thank you, Mr. May. I was just curious. So, so I, right now, I just, I view the process that's being presented as the city attorney and his office are not for or against anyone. It's just a legal mind that is able to look at the criteria to determine whether or not the law's being met. And then if the boxes are checked, they come to council and they make their case. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I think you are understanding that correctly. And if I could just offer my perspective on these changes, it appears council focusing on the review and the appellate procedures. And, you know, I think it is a change in the role of council based on a analogy to Rule 106. And I think a lot of these changes come out of those sorts of concepts, as well as administrative law, where you do sit as an appellate body and you're deferring to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is the agency with the expertise. And so the review criteria about competent evidence, clear and convincing evidence of a plain error, those are the abuse of discretion type of concepts that are coming out of 106, or if you act outside your, if the Planning and Zoning Commission acted outside its authority. In terms of the city attorney review, you know, I don't imagine denying many appeals. I mean, that's a pretty weighty decision. I view it more as an opportunity to help citizens sharpen their appeal to tee it up better for council. Because they, they may not be familiar with these types of processes and I can point them to the criteria within the code for which they can appeal and how to frame their appeal so that council has an easier time understanding that appeal and the appellants can better frame their arguments within the context of the code, which I think is sometimes lacking for citizens who don't deal with land use applications and development applications regularly. And so I don't see it as, I mean, for the truly frivolous, yeah, you do become a gatekeeper. But because they get a chance to cure deficiencies, I see this as an opportunity for the citizens to make a better presentation of their appeal that conforms with the code and makes it easier for everyone. I think Mr. Bagley can sympathize that sometimes when you're dealing with a pro se client, they don't have the legal framework in mind when they write these things. And I think city attorney review will help them frame it properly for the appeal consistent with the code.
And that was my next, thank you. That was actually going to be my next point. By using this, I could see how it could actually become more likely that, that an appeal is won, rather than just showing up to council. As far as planning and zoning goes, I think that, I mean, we're always delegating, we have delegated to them powers, they're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. And I think that having them make decisions and then making the appeals process more structured, rather than just, "Oh, I want another shot at it, but this time with council," is actually a good thing. And I, every time, I've not heard very many appeals, but every time I've sat here, I usually just get the impression that it's someone saying, "I don't like it. I want another shot at it," rather than having some legal basis or framework for the appeal. So, I'm, I'm a big believer in legal process. So I'm a big believer in legal process, and I think what we're hearing tonight is appropriate.
And I guess, you know, Eugene and I think that it's admirable that you view this change as the city attorney playing the role of assisting a pro se appellant in constructing a appeal that is perhaps more narrowly focused and relevant. However, you know, the true role of the city attorney is not to help the pro se person, it's to defend the city from exposure. And so the pro se appellant is not, or the non-applicant appellant is really on their own, and it really is an advantage to the city to always see somebody else's hand when you're going into court. I also do feel that the other thing that we narrow in this new process is that the difference in what we have currently in the new process is that there was always an opportunity on appeal to add new evidence into the record that may not have been able to be brought up, that might have been exposed during a planning and zoning presentation, and that may never had been part of the discussion previously, and therefore the Planning and Zoning Commission had not had an opportunity to review evidence that may have come to light following their decision. And I think that this, because of the narrowness of the scope of the appeal and the evidence that could be brought in, you cannot have that opportunity to really have the full public information on something that may be a real critical issue to the community come out. So in that regard, it also narrows any additional action following a council decision to be able to move to a higher level if that's warranted by the person appealing and still unsatisfied. And I just wanted to mention, you know, Councilmember Santos, I think that the intent of what I said about council not making a decision is that if it never comes out of the city attorney's office for us to see, we would never be able to be that final decision-making body to have the, a citizen initiative to overturn a council decision happen. It would just eliminate that process altogether, and that was really my, my point on that. Not that it couldn't possibly happen if the appeal was successfully argued in front of the city attorney. So I'm still not really satisfied with this process, and, you know, I'm going to continue to mull it over. And I think that all, many of us were conflicted by such a big sea change in process and procedure.
Yes, I guess I'd like to clarify that too, that I agree with Sarah about the, that was my concern, is that right now we have, I mean, I really like and trust almost everybody in this room, and, but once again, you can't make public policy based on personalities that are here now, because this is all going to change. And these have to be things that we, if we have send a city attorney that is not so honorable someday, yeah, then what will we do if we never even hear about this? Because somewhere along the line, it doesn't get, it gets appealed and that appeal is turned down, and we never even hear about this. It won't get to us. It just won't be an issue. And then that really becomes very problematic, because then we're reneging on our, what we were elected for, which is to represent the citizens of Longmont.
Okay, I guess we have our motion, it's been seconded. It's time to vote. Okay, it passes five to two with Councilmember Levison and Councilmember Christensen descending. Okay, so now it's time for mayor and council comments.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I of course need to have my business of the week, and this week, that business will be Oscar Blue's Homemade Liquids and Solids. It's one of those places that makes Longmont a unique and exciting place to come visit. It's located at 1555 South Hoover Street, and one of the things I admire about them is their canned aid. They gave over half a million dollars to flood victims. So go visit Oscar Blue's Homemade Liquids and Solids.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I hope everyone had a very nice holiday and New Year's, from what I understand, it was pretty safe, so that's always a great thing. I was forwarded an email from Stephen Schultz, who is the president of the Longmont FOP, our police officers collective bargaining unit. On January 9th is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. The National Order, the National Fraternal Order of Police partner and partners with other law enforcement associations across America will have a National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day scheduled for January 9th, 2015. With everything that has gone on in the last several months in other parts of the country, you know, some people will have opinions, yea or nay, but, and since it's a little late because this is coming on, I believe the ninth is a Friday. I would hope, as a body or individuals, that we would at least acknowledge the Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I can't think of a better way to show our appreciation, not only for law enforcement officers throughout the country, but those that actually serve and protect the citizens of Longmont. So I'd like to put out a motion to, just to, yeah, we can do a resolution next week. So if I forwarded you the email that Schultz sent me, so you can look it over. So if it's possible, I would at least, I don't know, would you like a motion to put this on the agenda? Or mayor, would you like to put it on the agenda?
Yeah. I mean, I think we could actually maybe even decide tonight to support a resolution. I think, is everybody okay with making?
I would move to direct staff to have a resolution sent. I'll send you, Sandy, what Stephen Schultz sent me, but I would also, so that's the first motion. I would move that we forward this to staff and they bring it back at the next regular meeting.
I'll second that. Let's turn on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
And also, mayor, I guess, I won't, since we're having that, at least it'll be on next week's agenda. The ninth is the actual day. So I would just hope the council would just be supportive of this effort. So that's what I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to take an opportunity to wish everybody a prosperous and wonderful start to 2015, and just want to also mention that we've got the, I think it's the seventh annual open forum coming to city council on January 20th, the day after the Martin Luther King holiday, which we also will have a great community celebration of the MLK holiday at Silver Creek High School that I hope people can participate in. And I think that the open forum, I want to ask everybody out there in TV land to come down to city council, and the open forum is an opportunity that we have really once a year, where we take away the podium and we can actually have a dialogue with folks for, you know, anywhere between five and 10 minutes, depending on how much, we have questions to follow up on with what people bring to us. And I really want to encourage, you know, anybody to give us an idea they have for the city, or tell us about what they saw somewhere else that they think would work in Longmont. Tell us something that's happening in your neighborhood, you know, give us that idea to steal or volunteer to start something good in the community and let us know about what you're doing and any aspirations you have to help us come together and move forward successfully. And we've actually gotten some pretty good ideas from people that have come down in past years. So encourage folks to participate in that. And then I also want to give a shout out to now council member, last day that day was council member Beth Humeck in Thornton, day on the city council in Thornton, and tomorrow she will be sworn in as senator for that region of Colorado. So I want to wish everyone, not just Beth Humeck's success in their legislative year, but everybody else who's going to be sworn in tomorrow. And also, I'd like to recognize we will be having a change in leadership in our federal leaders, and I really look forward to seeing if we can't get some contact with their new staff members so that we are introduced to know who the new staff members are to do their community outreach, and we can set up those meetings in DC. And then as part of the discussion that I had with staff around the land development code, we actually pretended like we were uninformed citizens, and we went on the city website to actually see if we could find where any development application was. And I couldn't find it. Development staff could find it, because they sort of knew other ways ins and outs to look for it. But I think that if we're going to expect Joe, you know, Mr. Joe or Mrs. Joe or Ms. Joe citizen to be engaged and being productive at these meetings, we have to really make it easy for them to find the information. And, you know, give them the tools. And I understand that with the new program changes in the computer systems, the intent is to make it easier, but I also have noticed that we don't receive once a quarter a list of all of the development applications that are pending or recently suspended, and we used to get that in our information packet about once a quarter. So could we start getting that again, please? Because, you know, when people drive by a sign or they see that piece of open land, you know, you can figure out what's supposed to be done with it. And for some of the ones where we haven't had development application, those are, some of those projects went into suspension when the market turned down, and yet people assumed they just went away, but they weren't just gone away. So I'd like to have that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to give a shout out for all the city workers that got out on Christmas Day to clear our arterials. That was above and beyond, I mean, it was a necessary thing, but I just want all city police to know how much that the council really appreciates them getting out there on Christmas Day. And I have a couple of comments and things that I've seen. I think generally, we do a really good job on our arterial streets and, and, you know, the citizens, sometimes they expect us to have, you know, a fleet of 200 snow plows so we can do all the side streets, but we could do that, but I think we have to raise our city taxes quite a bit, and usually two or three days later, it's, the snow's gone anyway. But I think it's also important to really encourage the businesses along Main Street, particularly on the sidewalks, to get those sidewalks cleared, because it's not different, it's not easy to be a pedestrian on Main Street, particularly South Main, and at North Main, you know, if the businesses are responsible for clearing the sidewalks. There's a little bit of confusion now, what happens when the city is plowing a city street and plows the snow up onto a sidewalk, just private sidewalk? Who's then responsible for re-clearing that sidewalk? You know, there's a little bit of clarity to that issue. But anyway, overall, I think the city does a fantastic job with snow removal, and I am really thankful that we've got dedicated city employees that, so, thank you.
Speaking of snow removal, I think most of us do this, but I'd just like to encourage people when they're out there shoveling the snow anyway, you know, if you know you've got an elderly neighbor or somebody who's disabled, just shovel another three minutes and do their sidewalk for them too. Thanks.
Mayor, to your, regarding the snow plows and the snow removal, I talked to Bob Allen yesterday. He said if resident, if that does occur, and, you know, residents have, you know, basically shoveled their sidewalks and what have you, and the snowplow comes and recovers them, just to call, you know, call Public Works and National Resources, and they will send somebody out and they will clean that up.
Great.
That's what Bob Allen told me, so.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to say thanks to our city manager and mayor who set the agenda. Three years ago, when I was first elected as council, it was not uncommon to go well past, you know, 11 o'clock. And so the brevity of our meetings and the efficiency at which we get things done lately, I, my family and my business, thank you both, so, thank you. On that note, I'm moving adjourned.
City manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor, council.
Okay, city attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right, we are now adjourned.